I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Mazel Tovski roll call please.
Charles Volk.
Here.
Luke Kellyer.
Here.
John Bermal.
Here.
Dan Wolter.
Here.
Joshua Lee.
Here.
Okay, moving on to item number three, citizens' comments is an opportunity for citizens to address this council about issues. If you have an issue, you can come up and state your name and address. You have three minutes. If you are here for an item that's on the agenda later, we typically will have a public comment, so you don't have to come up now. Yep, sir.
My name is Dan Grigsby. I live at 8315 177th Street West. Mr. Mayor, city council members and staff, thank you for the opportunity to speak to you today. As my visual aids clearly indicate, I'm here to speak with you about businesses illegally advertising on the public right of way. After 23, the Lakeville City Code says that the city finds, quote, "exterior signs have a substantial impact on the character and quality of the environment." And in establishing an ordinance to police them, says that you intend to regulate the signs to, quote, "maintain, enhance, and improve the aesthetic environment of the city by preventing visual cluster that is harmful to the appearance of the community." The code specifically prohibits placing signs in the public right of way. It states, "only those signs installed at the direction of the Minnesota Department of Transportation." The Dakota County and the city of Lakeville shall be located within the public right of way. And yet yesterday, I collected the 102 signs that you see here before you in less than an hour. I did all of this within a couple of miles of my home, entirely in Lakeville and entirely in city streets. So I've collected illegally posted signs. Councilwoman, thank you. I've collected illegally posted signs since the spring. I've done it 10 times. Each time, I fill my trunk with 100 signs. That's 1,000 signs this year. And that's just a small part of Lakeville. According to the Lakeville Comprehensive Land Use Plan, neighborhoods and parks in the places that people live, excluding the rural areas, make up about a third of Lakeville. So the back of the envelope math says that at every, at any moment, thousands of signs clutter our intersections in our parks, and they're illegal. And the code provides for both enforcement and penalties for violating. It says, "City reserves the right to require the removal at the owner's expense when the requirements of this chapter are not completely followed or adhered to." And it stipulates that "any person who violates, disobeys, omits, neglects, or refuses to comply with this chapter, or resists the enforcement of any of the provisions of this chapter, shall, upon conviction thereof, be fined or penalized, not more than the maximum level established by state misdemeanors." Well, I've contacted some of the worst offenders, informing them that they're violating the law and asking them to stop posting them. Most of them have continued to do so despite knowing that it's illegal. At a minimum, excuse me, I firmly but respectfully ask you to enforce the law, the responsibility of which lies with the zoning administrator. At a minimum, the city should identify those who are posting the signs, notify them that they are in violation of the law, provide a grace period, we don't have to be monsters about this, in order to let them, remove them, and I'd say a month would be reasonable, and then issue penalties with enough teeth to discourage further violations. The Minnesota State statute that sets the maximum for a misdemeanor offense is $1,000, and that's in line with what I'm seeing in other states. So that is enough to provide teeth. And then pursue those who don't pay. So I wrote to the council earlier this year about this, and only Dan responded, and I thank you for that, Councilman Walter. Given the proliferation of signs since, I can only assume that this hasn't been taken up. So I hope you will begin and then continuously enforce the code because it's the right thing to do. But if you don't, with sadness and regret, in accordance with Chapter 586 of the Minnesota statutes, I will file a writ of mandamus asking for the courts to compel the city to do so.
Thirty seconds.
There's an established, a well-established practice in Minnesota case law that requires cities to enforce their own zoning laws. I don't want it to come to it, and it would be disruptive, not only of the staff, but also of the mayor and the council, because all of you have responsibilities. I'll close just by giving a few suggestions about how you might update the ordinance. In their advice to municipalities, the League of Minnesota Cities differentiates between commercial and non-commercial speech. Updating the code to allow some leeway for non-commercial organizations like the Scouts or the Knights of Columbus that enrich the community would be well considered. Additionally, I think having a carve-out for things like garage sales, when citizens themselves are hosting these things, they're good at picking them up. And finally, my last ask is Lawn Doctor, for example, who I contacted, has placed more signs in Lakeville than anyone else, and yet they marched into Panaprag Parade. So my last request is that you deny entry to companies that violate this ordinance. So thank you, and I'll clear my desk. Thanks very much.
Thanks, appreciate you coming in, and we will...
Mayor?
Yeah?
I just wanted to make a comment for the audience that I wasn't trying to be rude. I was asking the attorney a question whether it was legal for a citizen to be picking up signs in the community. So that is, is it?
Yeah.
Probably not.
Okay, so you're not enforcing, and I get in trouble for doing so?
Mayor, I'm not trying to argue with the...
Yeah, I understand.
I just wanted to allow the citizens to know that I wasn't trying to be rude. I was just trying to get clarification on an issue.
Thank you. Any other citizen comments this evening? Good evening, Mr. Erickson.
Good evening. I'm Bob Erickson, 19081 Inville Drive. That's within the Trevor-on-the-Greenway neighborhood, which adjoins Apava Avenue. Good evening, Mayor Hellyer and council members and Administrator Miller. Thanks for providing me this opportunity to share my interest in maintaining a quality design feature for Apava Avenue. I've provided you a handout this evening, which has two photos. The top photo represents the embossed color concrete median design feature. As a member of our HOA board, I observed during the 2023 Apava Construction Improvement Project, this section, median section, had been removed and replaced, maintaining the longstanding median design feature. As a side note, there are over seven miles of city and county roads within Lakeville. By the way, that would be 185th, Kenrick, Apava, Dodd Boulevard, Highview Avenue, and that feature is prominent in all of those roads and streets. More recently, I observed the embossed color concrete median being removed and replaced with a standard concrete, and I've shared that photo with you, and that's part of the 2024 Apava Avenue Improvement Project. As a side note, this design was established more than 20 years ago and has been used as recently as when the Dodd Boulevard project was undertaken. Also included with this design element, colored median, is landscaping, landscape plantings, boulevard trees, just to name a few of the aesthetic features and traffic calming elements that go with this design. The Institute of Transportation Engineers, Federal Highway Administration, and MINDOT all recognize the value of these traffic calming features. Please consider maintaining, maintaining these existing Lakeville infrastructure features. As a side note, again, I've spoken with the Assistant City Engineer and Public Works Director. Lakeville should be proud of the traffic calming elements. It's one of the only communities in Dakota County that exhibits that and use that in their design features. More recent traffic calming elements or features are our landscaped roundabouts, which are just spectacular and serve a useful purpose in calming the traffic as they use those transportation features. Also, the school speed zones. Thanks for considering maintaining the median design feature that was brought to the community some 20 years ago.
Mr. Erickson will follow up. Any other public comment? Okay, moving on to item number four, additional agenda information, Mr. Miller.
Mayor and council, there's a revised item at your desk. It's for item 6O. It's a change order project down on County Road 70. The change there is just simply in the dates. It's not anything other substantive than that.
Okay. And then moving on to item 5A, presentation, and we'll have a presentation from Bridget Powers about The Taste of Lakeville. Good evening and welcome.
Good evening. Thank you for having me. I am Bridget Powers, the Chair of The Taste of Lakeville this year, and I'm just going to give you a quick summary of what we have planned for this year. So far, as far as sponsorship goes, we've raised over $43,000 in, with 28 sponsors. We also have in-kind sponsors such as Helm Electric, Midwest Fence, people that just donate materials and labor for us, and we have raised over $40,000 with that as well. And, you know, the nice thing about everything we raise is it goes back into the community and into the international community to help others. Food vendors so far, we have four food trucks and another 32 food vendors that will be at the event. We have a roving selfie photo booth that will be there this year. We're also going to add a couple beanbag tosses, just for something for some of the people to do while they're there, that's something new this year. We are going to have the same band, Branded Hot Country. They were very popular last year, and I thought they did a good job, you know, pleasing everyone. We will again have the Pulled Hab booth, and we have received the temporary gambling license for that. We're going to be having bucket drawings. For this year, we added a Vikings ticket game. So the December 19th, Monday night, Viking versus Bears, we will be doing a bucket raffle for that. We will also be raffling off a Traeger grill and then another package, which will be alcohol and gift cards. So we're just going to have three different bucket raffles this year. One thing we added on the request of people last year was, as people are coming to the event, we are asking them to bring a donation to 360 communities in the form of either food or personal hygiene items. And then for everyone that brings a donation, we will give them a ticket they can put in a separate bucket raffle, and we will be giving them state fair tickets. We are also new this year. We're going to have inside the Lakeville Arts Center 12 to 15 of the nonprofits that we support, both internationally and locally, and they'll have an opportunity, just because a lot of people don't know what Rotary does and what we support. So we think this is a good way to give them some extra exposure, that they'll be able to answer questions for people, or people can just see the types of things that we support in Rotary. The event is next Thursday, August 15th, from 5 to 9. So, any questions?
How can people get tickets?
The tickets are, good question, tickets can be on the tasteflakeville.org website. You can order them online. We also have them at, Lakeview Bank has actual hard copy tickets. The Lakeville Liquor Stores have tickets, and then some, I believe Ace Hardware, but I'm not sure. They were, I believe Ace said they would do it. But again, if you're buying from a different business, you have to pay cash so they can keep that separate from their own retail funds. One thing to note, that if you buy online, there's a $6 service charge. If you buy from one of the Rotary members, there is not. So that's just a little incentive to get to know your fellow Rotary members.
Very good. Other questions? Thank you. We're looking forward to it.
Thank you.
Have a good week. Okay, moving on to our next item, our Public Works Quarter Report, and I'll turn it over to Mr. Ome.
All right. Good evening, Mayor, city council members. This is the second quarter report for Public Works. I'll start off with a couple county projects that we're currently partnering with and working on. The Dodd Boulevard Street Reconstruction Project that's ongoing right now. We're making great progress there. The first stage of the project, that section of road from Flagstaff Avenue to Pilot Knob Road, that's anticipated to be open end of August here now, about the week of August 23, I think. So that section will be open to traffic here very soon. The second stage, from Cedar Avenue to Flagstaff, that's our last stage, and that's going to be anticipated to be opened mid-October. So this is a joint project, again, between the county and the city. It's urbanizing the rural section road here, putting curb and gutter and storm sewer, putting trails on both sides of the road, and eventually, this county road is going to be turned over to the city for operations and maintenance in the future, after the project's complete. The second project, County Road Overlay Project, annual project they have, this year it's going to be on County Road 70, from about Kenrick to the county, the west county limits. This project includes replacing some damaged curb and gutter, some storm sewer improvements, and then milling overlay of that corridor, that county road, and that this project is anticipated to start right around September 5. Then moving on to some of our street projects that we have currently under construction, our Collector Road Improvement Project, Apava Avenue from 185th down to 192nd Street, Indiana, from Apava to Dodd Boulevard, 175th Street on the west side of, Apava is under construction at this time. So Apava Avenue was just reclaimed this Friday and Saturday. We're getting ready for paving on that section of roadway, the Indiana westbound traffic is currently closed at this time, but we're anticipating to open that section of road end of the week here, and we're anticipating, we're working towards having all the roads open to traffic or through traffic by the end of the month here. Then for our street reconstruction project, this is about four and a half miles worth of streets we're currently working on for improvement. This project's about 40% complete. This project is delayed a little bit because, due to the weather, but we're making some good progress on the project. We are anticipating the project to be complete in September or early October. For our surface seal project this year, we're going to be surface sealing about 30 miles of streets. This project is start, will start this week. It's about two weeks worth of work. In this, again, the surface seal is the penetrator. It seals the roads and extends the life of our roadway systems. Moving on to the street division, we've been having a busy year this year. One of the major operations was helping out with Panaprag, with traffic control, maintenance, and operations during the festival. We've been removing a lot of Emerald Ash Bar trees from parks and right-of-way within the community, and lots of patching and sign replacements this summer so far. The street division and also the utility division did assist with Waterville with their flood mitigation efforts this year. End of June, we sent down a few folks to help out with that operation. This was a joint operation between a lot of communities in Dakota, not just in Dakota County, but in the state as well. This operation was through the mutual aid agreement that we have through the state. Moving on to utilities, this is a graph showing the water production that we have. So far this year, we're down 30% from this year versus last year. This can be attributed to, you know, the wet year that we have. Couple projects from the utility division that we're working on, repainting the central maintenance facility water tower off of 179th Street. That project did start last year, last week, with the containment system, putting that up. This week, we're going to be starting to remove the paint from the tower and some interior work as well. And the project is anticipated to be cleaned first week in October. The New Well 23, which is being constructed on 190th Street, is going, going pretty good. We are finishing wrapping up our drilling operations at this time. After the drill, drilling operations, we're going to be test pumping the well. And then after that, this fall, we're going to be getting going on the site work restoration and installing the pump, electrical panels, and buildings, and those type of things, and getting it ready for operation. So this will be, this project will be substantially complete in the spring of 2025. The sewer lining project that is currently taking place in their downtown right now is wrapping up. We did line a 30-inch and a 42-inch large diameter sanitary sewer system that runs through our community. This is a trunk main that services a large portion of their community. We did identify some infiltration and some deterioration of the pipe, so we wanted to line that pipe, just to eliminate some of that infiltration and potentially future failures of that pipe. So this project will be complete by the end of the week. The city did receive a grant from the Metro College and Council this year, earlier this year, for a water efficiency rebate program. So we're using this money to, for replacement of inefficient toilets, irrigation controllers, irrigation sprinkler systems that the residents have, that they would, if they'd like to upgrade those, that equipment, you can check out our website and check out the rebate program for more information. Then moving on to environmental services, one of the bigger projects that we're working on this year was the East Lake Invasive Fish Removal Program. This is a partnership between Vermillion River Watershed, Dakota County, and the city. We did receive a grant, a little over $337,000 for this project. We did put in a fish barrier at the outlet of the lake to stop migrating rough fish from entering the lake. And in this summer, we, in spring, we removed carp and other rough fish from the lake, and we're going to be planning to do that in 2025. Again, this project is, again, to reduce the phosphorus loadings in the lake, improve the habitat for native fishes, and then also enhance the recreational abundance of the lake and the watershed. Then moving on to forestry, forestry's been very busy with the Emerald Ash Bor infestation. We just removed 91 stumps from our right-of-way. These trees have been taken down this year in last winter, and we still have a bunch more to go here. But we did inject 836 trees this year for Emerald Ash Bor to try to protect some of those trees. That's down 186 trees from what we did in 2022. And then we're going, again, we're going to be doing a survey this summer and looking at trees for removal in the fall and winter for Emerald Ash Bor. We are partnering with our local residents to help them address their Emerald Ash Bor trees on their property. To date, through the ordinance, we've removed 185 trees from private properties. Actually, the property owner has removed those trees. We're just helping facilitate that and partnering with the property owners on that. We're going to be doing another survey again in this fall or August to identify additional trees and work with property owners on removing those trees. Rainbow Tree Care does still provide residents with a bulk rate discount for treating trees, ash trees on their property that property owners would like to treat and help protect from the Emerald Ash Bor. You can check our city website for that as well. A little update on our Emerald Ash Bor grants that we received in 2022. We did receive almost $100,000 for Emerald Ash Bor tree removal and replanting. That grant has now been completed for the work and final paperwork with the DNR for that project. 2023, earlier this year, actually, we were notified about a $338,000 grant that we received for removal and replanting of ash, or replanting of trees in parks. So we're working on that grant right now. We're going to be starting to remove some trees this fall in conjunction with that program or that grant. This is a three-year grant, so it'll be divided up about evenly, one, a third, a third, a third for the next three years of that grant money. So it'll be a lot of trees that will be removed and replaced in our parks. And then additionally, forestry has been working on a lot of construction projects, making sure that the contractor's putting in trees correctly for longevity of those trees, removing trees that may have fallen in our outlots or next to private property owners that may cause damage or safety issues. So we're working on a bunch of those trees right now. And then also, lastly, the facilities division, we did receive a grant from Dakota County CDA for the upgrade of service windows at City Hall here. There's three service windows that we upgraded. This was 100% funded by the CDA. The project was to address the ADA deficiencies at those windows and then also address some security concerns as well, too. So that project is substantially complete now. And with that, that's my update. If I have any questions, I'll stand for you.
Two different topics of questions, because your report always encompasses a lot of information. The first thought that just crossed my mind is when you were talking about the County Road 70, and that's not going to start till September. Do we notify the bus company on projects that are going to be, you know, problematic for them for getting students, et cetera?
Correct. Yeah, that's a good question. So yeah, we do work with the county on any notifications that may impact the traveling public, especially the bus systems, the bus companies in the school districts, and let them know that this project's coming up and make sure that they're aware of any impacts that may take place because of the project. Now, I don't think there's going to be any detours with this project, but we'll let them know that there's going to be maybe some slowdowns and some issues getting through that corridor in the future.
Right. Then the other thing is, is that going to the signs, that are getting replaced in the city. My question, too, is, can we partner with Dakota County? Dakota County is so huge that they probably don't even realize that some of their signs are fading out, et cetera. Is there a way for us to partner with them in that we can replace some of those signs for them and charge them? Or how do we notify them that some of their signs are so faded out?
So every agency's supposed to complete a survey. I think it's every three years, making sure that their signs are, the retro reflectivity is up to standards. So the County County should have a policy on that. I don't know exactly what their policy is, but if there's any specific signs that you see that should be, should be replaced that you think, we can always let them know about those signs. But I'll keep an eye on that as well, too, and...
Well, I just didn't know what, so what is our process at the, in early spring to determine which signs are going to be replaced over the summer?
Yep. So we do a survey, break out our city about...
What's a survey?
A survey is we drive around and look at all the, all the signs within our community, and we look at how reflective those signs are. We have a database through Cartograph that identifies how old every sign is within our community. So based on that, we have a... identifies how old every sign is within our community. So based on that, we have an idea of how old those signs are, how good their reflectivity is. So, but we go around and physically inspect those signs, and if necessary, we mark them down for replacement in the spring. So, and again, we survey about a fourth of the city every year.
And I know that that keeps you busy to be able to, you know, to do that. But I think it would be helpful if you just even had a side tab that said, "We noticed these signs as we were doing our survey," and notify the county.
Okay. Yep. We'll keep that in mind. Thank you.
Questions? I said one question on the paving seal there. It looked like around Crystal Lake, you're going to do pavement sealing, but they're also doing the lift station. Are we going to time that together?
Yep, definitely. It's a good point. I'll make sure we're looking at that.
Yeah, okay. Very good.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on to the consent agenda. Any items to highlight, Mr. Miller?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. A couple tonight. Items six, E, F, and G are all temporary liquor licenses for different issue, for different events that are going on across the city. And then items H, M, and T are all related to the development of Grand Prairie Park and installation of different facilities that are going along with that.
Okay. Very good. Any item that anyone else in the council wants to, yeah?
I'd just like to, I don't want to pull up, I want to highlight item I, which was the amendment to the rental registration ordinance. I just want to say thanks to city staff. Since we approved that ordinance, you have a system in place. We're getting registrations. It's real easy to understand, and then you caught an issue and corrected that. So I just want to say kudos. That's an important ordinance that will allow us to work with our rental housing, both multi-housing and rental housing that occurs in single-family neighborhoods. So thank you.
Very good. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion about the consent agenda? Any none? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close? Okay. Consent agenda passes. We'll now move on to item seven, Sundance Lakeville Second Edition. Frank, are you going to go first, the applicant? Okay.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name's Ryan Steiler, Vice President of Development with Timberland Partners. Probably no stranger at this point. I've been here a few times. Here in late fall twenty twenty-three, for as part of the rezoning and regiding of the property. So after working with the city and staff and working through the plan here tonight to request approval of the preliminary plat and the conditional use permit for Sundance. I'll try to keep it brief. I know Mr. Dempsey's going to give a longer staff report, but I'll just try to go through the highlights here. The site is four point seven-four acres, one hundred and seventy-six total units, one hundred and sixty-seven stacked flat town homes, and nine single-family rentals, five thousand square foot clubhouse fronting one sixty-second. And then that'll contain our fitness center, yoga studio, club room. We'll have onsite management and leasing, outdoor pool, dog park, pet spa. That rendering you're looking at is an actual rendering of what the project will look like. So consistent with city standards, requiring brick and class A finishes. This is an aerial of the site, looking from the southwest of the site, across the site to the, be the northeast. See the nine single-family homes and the three acres on the northwest corner there, clubhouse along County Road Forty-six, and then the townhomes. And then the thirty-two-foot private road with the public easement kind of cutting across from Kendale to Buck Hill Road, and then Davis Medical's recently approved buildings there on the corner. Not here really to re-go over the use of the property or whether it's appropriate or not. We dealt with that in November. But just to kind of give you an idea of the quality of the development and some demographics, one, two, and three-bedroom townhomes with rents ranging from eighteen hundred dollars on the one bedrooms to twenty-seven hundred on the three bedrooms, and then the single-family rentals from twenty-nine hundred to thirty-nine hundred dollars. Hundred percent market rate project, no subsidy involved, and no request or ask from the city for anything. This is actual photos from existing projects. The one on the left is a project that's been completed in Omaha, Nebraska. The one on the right is a clubhouse that we completed of a Sundance project in Dallas. You can see nice finishes, well thought out. And as I showed on the rendering, the project in Lakeville would actually have more brick and more quality finishes on the exterior than the Omaha project. This is a existing deal here in the Woodbury. I just brought this up for a couple of reasons. I think probably the private roadway with the public easement might drive some questions tonight. What's proposed in Lakeville's thirty-two-foot road, this is Woodbury. I don't know if you can tell, but in the back, call it left corner of the photo, there's a large senior multifamily housing deal that actually connects to the road network through the Sundance project. And then there's a townhome community to the, you can't see it, it's off-screen to the right, but actually connects through. So this is purposely connected to the city street grid in Woodbury, and those neighborhoods have the ability to access through this. This road that you're looking at is twenty-four feet wide compared to thirty-two proposed in Lakeville. This is a deal we recently finished in Omaha. I put this up here for the same reason. This is connected, those two main roads you see through the project connected to single-family neighborhoods. The city of Omaha required that we connect to the city grid. Those roads in Omaha are twenty-five feet wide, and that is kind of a like scenario to what we're looking at. These dump onto a main arterial road, which then dump onto the freeway system, which you can see on the right of your screen. So some key points tonight. The site was rezoned in twenty twenty-three for the contemplated uses. It was actually downzoned, as you remember. Previously, it was commercial, had the ability to put something with much higher density, much higher traffic on the site. We did some, we looked at the traffic of those potential uses. If it would have been a grocery store or fast food or something, it could have generated five to ten thousand more daily trips than what this project is anticipated to generate, so quite a bit more. The project conforms with all the current code requirements. It meets or exceeds the setback requirements, exceeds the parking requirements by over forty stalls. It's well below the maximum height limitation by about seventeen feet, based on what the current code would allow. Since the planning commission meeting a few weeks ago, we've resubmitted plans to the city that show additional screening to the neighboring properties. And we've also added a six-foot privacy fence all around the northern and western boundaries of the site. So basically, anything that's touching a residential, single-family home will have a privacy fence. We're not requesting, as I mentioned, any state, county, or city subsidy. We feel it's a good land use transition, especially compared, you know, you could go up to forty-eight feet here. Like I said, we're seventeen feet below what could be built here. It's a nice transition from single-family across to two-story multifamily to then the commercial along County Road Forty-six. The private roadway with public easement, I just want to make it very clear, and I'm sure it'll come up, that the party, the city is a party to this agreement. So this isn't just something that's nice to have. The city's an actual party on this agreement. We are welcome to all enforcement rights. That means no parking or anything the city would like to enforce. This is for the benefit of not just the city, but for us. There were some questions at the planning commission about setbacks from the road. So we pulled that information. So twenty-eight feet to the nearest unit entry, and so I will say that there are some garages that are closer to the street, but they're garage units. And I think the closest one is about sixteen feet from the roadway. But the closest unit entry is twenty-eight feet. And then that goes back to building two is forty-seven to sixty-two feet. The unit entry is off that street. And then building three is about twenty-seven feet off the street. So I think the traffic and engineering reports, which are in the packets, support the layout. They support the thirty-two-foot-wide street, both in terms of streets limiting the ability for on-street parking. And we will post no parking signs on the street. And then also, any wider streets, my understanding, backed by our traffic professionals, is that the streets like this constrict and make it, they deter speeding when you have roads like this width. So complementary uses with the medical and then locally-based ownership and development team. Brought this up before, but all the team members are local. We're based in Bloomington. We will develop, own, and manage this property for the long term. We plan on being neighbors here for a long, long time. Our architect's locally based, is our civil engineer who's been in business over twenty-five years, is local. And then RT Residential, part of the Tradition Company, so I think everyone in Lakeville is pretty familiar with, will be building this. They have a great reputation for building quality product, and we're excited to partner with them on this. And so apologize for taking up as much time as I did. And with that, I'll turn it over to any questions or Mr. Dempsey.
Any questions before we move on to... Okay. Mr. Dempsey? Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. The request from Timberland Partners is the construction of one hundred and sixty-seven stacked flat townhome units. The preliminary plat is what's being considered tonight, together with the conditional use permit. So the preliminary plat proposes thirteen townhome buildings on one lot. There's a clubhouse proposed, nine single-family residential lots, and the acreage is just under sixteen. The property is located at Buck Hill Road, north of one sixty-second street, which is County Road Forty-six, and Kendall Drive to the west. Conditional use permit is required to allow the multiple townhome buildings on a single parcel. A little bit of background, the, in twenty twenty-two, the Timberland Partners, same group, had requested a comprehensive plan amendment to allow rezoning of the property to M-one mixed-use district. This would have allowed one hundred and eighty-eight townhome units, also the same single-family lots, nine of them, on the entire eighteen-acre property. The city council chose not to support that, that request. Some of the comments that were raised had to do with the number of units on the property, the density for the entire property, and also the impact of some of the commercial zoning, which is, which would have eliminated all the commercial zoning on the property. So the developer has now submitted his revised plan. It's one hundred and sixty-seven units and the same single-family lots of nine, and then a three-acre commercial property, which was recently approved by the city council of the two medical buildings on the property. That was approved in July first. So, excuse me. So they did resubmit the plans, and that's what we have before us this evening. There was a traffic study that was done for this project at the request of city staff to get an understanding of the traffic movements, the impact to the surrounding neighborhoods, get an idea of the daily traffic coming through and accessing to and from County Road Forty-six. This was the original plan. If I could just back up again, this is the original plan that was submitted and not supported by the city in twenty twenty-two. At this point, this is the current zoning of the property. The purple represents the proposed development area today, as well as the green area for the single-family homes, and then the commercial area down in the southeast corner of the property. This is an aerial view of the site. This area here represents the first addition, which is the medical buildings. The larger outline is the property we're talking about this evening. This property did actually go on the other side of Kendall Drive. Kendall Drive was constructed two thousand and four-ish, I'm guessing, in that vicinity, that timeframe. But this was constructed as a roadway easement. This Kendall Avenue, Drive would be dedicated now as road right-of-way. To the north is the city of Burnsville city limits. To the east is commercial zoning. This remains an undeveloped commercial property. And this neighborhood to the north is constructed sometime, I believe, in the early eighties. And Streefland Edition was, again, just after, a few years after, year two thousand. This is a layout of the property. It shows thirteen townhome buildings with this preliminary There's various sized buildings that range between eleven and sixteen units within this development. There's a clubhouse property that's located in this corner here. A private drive is proposed to divide the property north and south. It'll allow east and west traffic between Kendall Drive to and from Buck Hill Road. There'll be no access directly from this development onto County Road Forty-six. This is the site plan. It shows the building layouts. You'll see that there's three private road accesses onto the private street for the townhomes. There's a single driveway that will serve the two parking lots for the two buildings with the medical building development. And then access to Kendall Drive, and that's also going to be the access to the single-family homes. This is an up-close view from Buck Hill Road here on the far right. The location of the buildings, approximately twenty-two feet for building three. You get to building two, it's just over twenty feet. Further, going further west, past this driveway, building one has twelve units. This is approximately thirteen feet from the private street edge. I mean, again, the clubhouse in this location here. One of the comments that was raised by the planning commission was concerns about crossing locations across the street here to the clubhouse area and park area. And city staff is going to be working with the developer on determining the best location and the means of providing safe, visible crossing locations. This, the architectural design, this is a twelve-unit building. It shows primarily the main access points to the garages from the sides. This represents the front and rear views of the building, typically in this area being the north and south views. Also a twelve-unit building. This is the clubhouse building. The, one of the comments that was raised by the neighbors to the north in the city of Burnsville here, these single-family residences, was a concern about landscapes, some sort of screening, landscape screening, potential of residents from this development trespassing into the neighborhood. And also, there's a transmission line easement that runs north, east and west to the north end of the property. And city staff had comments from Great River Energy, which owns that transmission line and the easement, and they had concerns about some of the tall trees that were being proposed. This landscape plan here represents an amendment to that plan. There are some spruce trees that are located in this area outside of the easement. And there's a large number of arbor vida trees, which are cedar trees that tend not to grow as high. And if they need to be trimmed, they can be trimmed fairly easily. The developer's also proposing a six-foot solid fence along the north property line. It doesn't show on this drawing, but it also continues to the single-family homes further to the east, to the west, rather, that same fence. This is a continuation of the landscape plan for the site. I wanted to point out, because one of the topics in this discussion with the public was the proposed private street. And a question did arise, where in Lakeville do we have a similar street? Not similar necessarily in residential design, but a private street that allows access from one neighborhood to a large collector's street. There are some and other parts of the city that are similar to this, but this one is one of the first ones I recall in my time at the city here, about year two thousand or so. This private street was extended from a deal... This private street was extended from Idylia Avenue. In fact, Google Maps shows it as Idylia Avenue, but this is a private drive that comes across Heritage Drive and south to 202nd Street. Sometimes the city will come through with a plow, but it's typically maintained by the developer, or the owner of the property, I should say, at this point. There was a traffic study that was done for this development, as I mentioned. I'll just go over the primary topics here, is that the proposed layout has determined that the service level, the function level of the street will remain at now and through future years, rating from A level to C level. If you have questions regarding what those mean, there are traffic engineers present to answer any of those questions, but I want to just point out that the study determined that its minimal impact to the traffic, number of vehicles on the streets as they're designed. The Parks, Recreation, and Natural Resources Committee did meet to discuss this request, and they recommended additional landscape screening to the north and west. I wanted to point out that the developer did respond to that, that he will provide a fence along that boundary. An important part of the discussion was also a result of the Dakota County Plat Commission making the determination that Kendall Drive could sometime in the future be restricted from its current full, not full because it can't cross County Road 46, but the ability to go, make left turns primarily from Kendall onto County Road 46 may be restricted if the county determines there's warrants in the future for doing that. The traffic study went all the way out to 2040 and determined that it's not likely that there'll be enough traffic through that period of time, and not with this development to require that restricted left-turn movement out onto County Road 46 from Kendall. So the county's identified it as a possibility, which is common, typical with their development reviews, and it's not part of this project that access would be eliminated. If it is, the left-turn movements are determined by the county to be restricted, then the traveling public would then be forced either to go through the private drive to Buck Hill Road or turn right to County Road Five and do a U-turn to go eastbound on County Road 46. So the planning commission held a public hearing July 18th. They did recommend approval of the preliminary plat and also the conditional use permit and its 12 stipulations. Stipulation 12, should point out, does stipulate no parking be allowed on the private street, and that would also require signage such. I'll take any questions.
Counsel, any questions for Mr. Dempsey?
In terms of the private road, how is that going to be designated or named or identified? Is it going to sound like a regular city street?
Commissioner, Councilman Berman, thank you. The street will look like a public street. It'll be a 32-foot-wide street, which is a common local street, and it will not have parking, so it'll look like a wider street. It will have no driveways coming out onto that street except for the townhome area and the commercial area to the south. So it will be probably named 161st Street, and I don't know about the signage for that, whether they'll have a different design to it, but it will look like a public street and it'll be named as a public street. You know, that's the purpose of that access to this area being from, not being addressed off of Buck Hill Road or Kendall Avenue, so we thought it was wise to have that as a named street.
Thank you.
Joshua?
One of the concerns that kept coming up at the planning commission meeting was in regard to an agreement about authority and power in terms of maintenance, and I think we've talked about enforcement and easements and that kind of thing, but I guess in terms of maintenance, is there a reason why we haven't been able or shouldn't have an agreement before this is approved, as opposed to, because it sounds like the plan is to formalize this agreement after this plat is finalized. Is there a reason why that has to happen in that order as opposed to having that agreement ready to go?
The agreement is an easement that is being dedicated to the city, and the city will not have to formally approve it, meaning the city council. City staff did work with the draft of the easement with the assistance of the city attorney, Public Works, Community Development, and we have drafted that easement. And that, I should say, the easement that we had drafted is for the commercial portion of this roadway. We have not drafted the, for the Sundance Lakeville Second Edition. We could have that ready for the final plat consideration of the city council with the development contract, but at this point, we have not.
I imagine that will look similar to what's already in place.
Yes, it will include language regarding public access across the roadway, pedestrian access to the sidewalks, expectations on maintenance. Maintenance is to follow the city's, I don't know if this is the proper term, but the program, the calendar for certain services, certain condition of the roadway to take action for repair, et cetera, and the city will have some enforcement over that. Details beyond that, I would defer to the city attorney to comment.
Sure. And that timeline is helpful to me, and I think, you know, certainly as we get to that final plat, I think that agreement would help ease concerns about how this is going to maintain access and maintenance throughout time, so, thank you.
Any questions?
Just have a comment. I know there's really nothing you can do about this, Mr. Dempsey, but the one thing that's like the biggest pet peeve of mine personally, just as a citizen, is creating a road system where that forces you to make U-turns. And so, you know, I can see it when somebody misses, that they don't realize that the freeway is going to be only on their right or only on their left type of thing, so they need to get to the next light to be able to make the U-turn. But when you're actually forcing citizens to make a U-turn, because that's their only means to be able to get someplace, it's just a huge pet peeve, and I don't know that there's anything we can do about it, but I don't like it when it happened on Dodd, you know, that you were forced to make U-turns to be able to get someplace. It just, especially when it's higher traffic, like County Road Five, County Road 46, these things that are heavily traveled, it causes issues and, you know, it just, it doesn't make for a very pleasant drive, but that's kind of a pet peeve. And then the other thing is, is that I'm going to assume that because the private road will be north of 160th, that if you're going to number it, that it would get lower. Just an assumption on my part. I literally live on 164th, so it just keeps getting lower as it gets to 160th, so, but 160th sometimes is considered 162nd. So, you know, it is the goofiest, County Road 46 is goofy when it comes to trying to figure out if you're on 160th or if you're on 162nd, so I get that. It might be nice just to have a named street instead of, because for me personally, if I'm lost someplace, I'm looking at those numbers trying to determine how do I get myself out of the situation before ending up in a, you know, totally lost situation.
If I could, Commissioner, I'm sorry, councilperson Volk. This is 158th, I believe, up here to the north. This is 162nd at County Road 46 here. County Road 46 turns to 160th Street near Crystal Lake Golf Course area in Pawa. Yeah, because of the curve, but this would be 162nd, 161st, and then the next numbered street would be 158th, so it does fall within the county's grid.
All right, well, it's a little confusing.
It's a lot less confusing than the, coming up with the named street, the alphabet.
Joshua?
Another question about the northern boundary. I really appreciated the responsiveness to the privacy fence that the neighbors were looking for in the additional landscaping. The concern I didn't quite understand, and maybe you can help me understand what the resident was looking for, as well as maybe how that was addressed, was about the power lines, and how, is it about the existing trees or the future trees, and how those are going to potentially mesh with the power lines?
Yeah, it was a long presentation, but I think the two things that were of concern, excuse me, was the loss of the existing natural growth of trees along that area, that the power company had been trimming but not removed, which is on this property. Those being removed and replaced with smaller trees. That issue, as well as some of the elevation issues concerning the elevation of these properties to the elevation of this property, I think these are slightly somewhat higher, that, and then the possibility of people trespassing onto the north, and the person that did make that presentation is here this evening, so.
So, just to be clear, the existing mature growth will need to be removed for this project, but it will be replaced with this landscaping plan?
That's correct.
Gotcha, all right, thank you.
Okay, oh, yeah.
Another quick question about, so the clubhouse access. One of the concerns that I've heard is townhomes are across the street from the clubhouse. Kids live in the townhome, kids are going to want to go to the clubhouse. There's a pedestrian walkway on the sidewalk that'll be built, but that's right at the intersection with Kendall. Is there any plans for any kind of a crossing closer to the clubhouse?
We haven't had that discussion yet, exactly where that crossing would be between this intersection at Kendall, or near this driveway, or in this location here. Typically, you don't want to have those on corners. It could potentially be in this location, but that's something we haven't determined, but we did indicate that city staff would work with the developer to find a safe location for that crossing. So it's clearly marked from people that are coming east and west on the private street.
It'll be designated?
A crosswalk is what was discussed. That's all I can tell you without knowing for sure. Typically, for any kind of a crossing, you're going to have, perhaps signage and a crosswalk. Yeah.
This is more of a developer question, but that clubhouse, it's not a playground, so it's not as though children are going across the street in the same way as this clubhouse. Is this open access for, can you just go into the pool without an ID? Is the building just freely available, or generally speaking, are children going to be with parents?
Yeah, so, thank you. Generally speaking, so it'll be on a lock system, a card system, both to get into the clubhouse and then also through the gate to get into the pool for safety reasons, so it's meant for the residents and it's locked on purpose unless you have card access or access to unlock the gates.
I do think that has an impact on the type of traffic that's coming across, but...
Yeah, I don't see, there's nothing over there just to draw kids over there to play, so to speak.
Thank you.
Okay. It's not a public hearing, but I'm going to open it up to public comments, and you have up to three minutes. I'm going to really hold you to that, but share your name and address for the record, and we'll start. Your number one.
Hi, Mayor, hi, Council. I'm Tara Weisar at 15939 Kendall Circle. You can see I'm in that cul-de-sac kind of directly left of Sundance, and I appreciate a lot of my concerns have been addressed by the developer and by the city planner and some of your questions, so I really appreciate that. My, the unfortunate obstacle here is that the county is eventually going to prevent us from taking that quick left to get onto Interstate 35. And otherwise, this development looks beautiful. It's going to be gorgeous, better than all of the junk trees there now, and we expected it to be developed, so it's just the public road thing. I feel like when our subdivision was developed, they punched through DuPont, that's a public road, they let all those people come through this area, so all those people are now going to be going through this private road. We already have problems on DuPont with speed and actually stopping at the stop sign, and so those people are going to be the same offenders through this private road. So I did send you guys a handout, and I got lost on the way to the new Goodwill, and I encountered this Keystone Avenue, which is, there's some townhouses and then some rentals, and they required an 80-foot right-of-way, public right-of-way in between that, and that's that second picture. And you notice, when you're driving on that street, it's nice and wide, it feels safe, it doesn't feel like someone's going to come shooting out of the yard, and dogs aren't going to be running across the road, and it just feels a lot safer for both existing residents and the new residents, if this were to be a public road. And then a couple of the other concerns that we haven't talked about yet tonight would be the city can't tag and tow for enforcing no parking, so if a big moving truck is parked on that street, who do we call? The city can't tag and tow. Same with speeding, and like I said, the DuPont problem is just going to be escalated to this road, and the city can't do anything about it. And I, for one, like Ms. Volk said, I will be taking five and doing a U-turn. I do not feel comfortable driving through this neighborhood. It just, it just feels too confined and too unlike a regular subdivision. I feel like I'm invading their privacy, going through their, their little neighborhood. And then the last thing would be inconsistent snow removal. We all know, you look out the window in the morning to see if the cities come through, to see if you can get to the county road. So I'll look out my window, the city will come through, and if I were to go through that subdivision, it might not be plowed. That's a factor. And those are all my points. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. I think your points are well-taken for our agreement on the road. Other comments?
Sam Haas, 15729 Bryant Avenue Court. Good evening, Mayor, Council members. Yeah, I came here tonight, I'm one of the members to the north of the property, and I did like the mention of the privacy fence and squeezing the pine trees in there. I hope it works out well. I do want to speak for my neighbor, just to the east of me, right here, the Samuelsons. They are at the lowest point here on the property, and it does look like, from the topology lines that I could glean from the drainage view, that it will be built up, not much, maybe about four to five feet there, and so I'm just, I'd like to speak on their behalf, since they're out of town, saying that they already have a six-foot fence, but as it slopes down, and so I, it seems like they're still going to see a majority of the building there, at least until maybe the pine trees grow in or whatnot, if those stay up. And ideally, I think, I think for my side, you know, eight to 12 feet would be preferred, but it's still, I'm liking what I'm seeing there. But yeah, definitely for these guys, you know, I remember Neil talking about, you know, if he could build a 20-foot fence, he would, just to be able to have that screening, because they have, as you can see, the pool there in the back, and everything, this whole hill dips down significantly from about 18 feet to about one foot in that topology view there, so that's all I really have. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Haas. Anybody else? I do know there's one person, I believe, online, Mr. Miller.
Chelsea, if you'd like to go ahead.
Hello, Mr. Mayor, and the city council, can you hear me?
Yep.
My name is Chelsea Vanna, I live at 15957 Kendall Drive, on my property back to this land.
Hold on, we could hear you, but now we can't.
Okay, my name is Chelsea Vanna, I live at... Okay, my name is Chelsea Vanna, I live at 15956 Kendall Drive, and my property backs up to this land. I do appreciate the developer deciding to put privacy fences along the north and the west residential area. My other concern that I can back up with my residents is turning, making that U-turn, like Ms. Bach said, forcing us to do that. And the amount of traffic that will be coming from that development, if Buck Hill Road is backed up in the wintertime due to the ski hill and everything, they'll be coming down that private drive and trying to come through DuPont and up out to 5. So, my concern with that is the traffic, the amount of traffic that's going to be present. I do have a question about the sidewalks, because they're currently not on the development plan. I learned that the sidewalks will be continued all the way down to Kendall to DuPont. My question is, what's going to happen with the current landscaping and trees that are there? I have several trees in my front yard that are right up in that easement. I don't want to be charged to have to take them out. So, question with that. And then, lastly, I just wanted to point out that I would look forward to the fact of findings for the 2040 comprehensive plan for Lakeville. And in that comprehensive plan, it states that District 1, that we have the opportunities for targeting development of high-density residential dwellings, and mixed use will be considered within the transit node of a half-mile existing metro transportation facility. This proposed development is one from the Metro Transit, Henrick Avenue, that comprehensive plan.
Thank you.
Those are my thoughts.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Dempsey, if you could just answer the questions related to sidewalks and then also just overall on landscaping, you're in Dale, if you have, please.
Mr. Mayor, I'm familiar with the situation regarding the sidewalk extension and to the point that there is existing trees along that sidewalk route on both of those parcels before DuPont Avenue. The city engineering division has been involved in the design work of that. I don't know exactly what that impact will be, but given the line of the sidewalk, it's likely to include removal of some of those trees. I think if the, I'm sorry, the last name, but Chelsea, I do recall speaking with you at the planning commission public hearing. You might want to speak with Zach Johnson, our city engineer, regarding that question. That division has been working on that potential sidewalk extension design.
Any other public comments about the project? Okay, seeing none. Counsel, any further discussion, questions, or motion?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The private road issue was the big concern for me, and I want to thank Mr. Dempsey today for kind of helping me put that in perspective in terms of the dimensions of it and such. And also, Ms. Weisar for your material, too. I thought that was very helpful. As I think discussed at the last, the approval of the commercial buildings, I was concerned about that plat commission issue as well, and was pleased to hear that that's not imminent with the construction of this project. So, I feel like those issues have been addressed. One of my big concerns would be if we are, you know, using that private road as the only way for people to get on to Eastern County Road 46. At least that's not the case right now. So, again, thanks to staff for helping in that, putting that in perspective.
Going off that, I think it was helpful to know that this development is not part of, I guess, it's not increasing the traffic to the point that's causing a trigger for that closure. And I think of this part of town as fairly developed. So, in my mind, I'm thinking that that closure is not imminent because the growth is not that extensive in this part of town, unless there's complete reconstruction of neighborhoods into higher-density housing. That's just a personal observation, but it sounds like it's not foreseen for at least 2040. But I don't see immense growth in that time in this part of town either. So, I'm thinking maybe even this intersection may not need to close. But until that point, we've got a plan for creating an agreement before the final plat submission, which is helpful, and that'll be in place well before a potential closure in the future. So, with that, I think the developer came to the table with answers to many of the concerns that we had. Of course, with anything, going from woods to a development in your backyard is not what many people want. But we all know that this is a property that needed or was going to be developed, and I think the product is going to be high-quality and these residents are going to be a great addition to our community. So, just thanks to staff and the developers and our residents for making this a better project as we went. So, I'm ready for a motion unless others have comments.
I just want to make a comment as you guys are talking and I was thinking about this. This has been, we've reached this point, it's been a couple-year-long process. And I really like the point that we have the development, that the project at now. But I really want to encourage and say thank you to the citizens that came and spoke at the planning commission meetings. I saw every one of those comments, any city council meetings that people came up to, because this is really how this gets done. And I agree, the developer's been really responsive to the questions that have been asked and to the concerns that have been raised. And, I mean, full agreement with the County Road 46 issue. At first, it seemed like that was imminent, and now it's more like, well, it could be a few years or many years. So, I feel good about the design of the project and the feedback that we've gotten to get to this point.
Just one small comment is, you know, I am pleased with who the developer is, the companies that are going into this, to be able to make it a good product. I happen to live over in the area around the bowling alley, so, in a very old neighborhood. My house was built in like '75 or something like that. My neighborhood's very old. So, we watched the bowling alley go up, well, before that, the golf dome that is now a You know, with the bowling alley came McDonald's and the memory care unit. You know, all these things were commercial, right backed up to old neighborhoods type of thing. However, the fears that we had as citizens, you know, when these things were going up, worrying about what was going to come into our neighborhood, et cetera, have not come to pass, thank goodness, and I'll knock on wood on that one. The companies have done a really good job of making sure that they have blocked off, like this privacy fence is going to, you know, take place. So, I think that everybody does the best that they can to be able to take care of the concerns of some of the older neighborhoods. And sometimes, it just happens to be that you've got residential coming right up against commercial. And I think we're trying, that they're doing a good job of trying to transition the both. So, I'm comfortable with how things have moved forward and I'm very comfortable of how they listen to the neighborhoods and try to accommodate their needs.
Mayor, I move to approve the preliminary plat of Sundance Lakeville second addition. Number two, a conditional use permit to allow more than one multifamily principal building on one lot. And three, adopt a findings effect.
Second?
Second.
Any further discussion? I just would like to add, you know, we had a very robust planning commission meeting. I watched that. I think, so, one, I'm grateful for the residents and neighbors that weighed in, but also, I'm pleased to hear from the developers that a lot of the things that were brought up were addressed. So, I appreciate the willingness of the neighbors and the developers to do that. So, with that, I will take roll call, please.
Aye.
Walter?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Volk?
Aye.
Helyer?
Aye. The motion passes, thank you. We'll now move on to items eight and nine, unfinished and new business. Okay, seeing none. Next announcements, our next city council meeting is Monday, August 19th, right here at City Hall. Our next work session is Monday, August 26th. And just a reminder, tomorrow night is National Night Out, and if you go to the city's website, you can find the closest neighborhood gathering and hope to see you around town. And with that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.